Hi, I'm good, how are you? Good to see you.
I'm not sure if I'm disappointed or, you know.
We should be flatter.
Do we have two people on the phone?
We have two over Zoom. And Bob.
Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We appreciate everyone's time this evening. At this time, we're convening a work session for the board and cabinet to discuss a draft of our board goals. This is an open dialogue to discuss items that have been put forth in the draft. They're before you this evening, so in your purple folders. You'll note that we have three documents before you, which I'll explain in a minute. I want to describe the different sections by which the board goals are drafted. And we have a total of six. If you open your pocket, you'll note that there are hard copies for the 21-22 school year. As a point of reference, there are goals. The first set of goals, if you'll see the top copy, is the start, the start of our goals. So before the metrics were added, so that's the first set. The second set for the 21-22 school year as a reminder, the goals that they were completed with the updated metrics. The last set that you'll see before you are the 22-23 school board goals as they're proposed. These are the goals that we'll review for our draft. And with those goals, there are six areas. First, student achievement. The board will support local effectiveness measures to improve student achievement and involvement. The second is equity. And this round, the board will support equity for all students. The third is board engagement. And this area speaks to how the board will engage and communicate with our school district community. The fourth being accountability. And this goal area emphasizes the board responsibility to govern policies and monitor programs across the district. Fifth being innovation. And this goal area focuses on innovative programs to support student achievement and success. And lastly is our fiscal responsibility. So before we start to review the goals, we want to note that within these six goal areas, there is direct alignment to our comprehensive plan. And in our comprehensive plan, we're targeting four areas. First is access to district programming. The second is innovative teaching and learning. The third is student involvement. And the fourth being fiscal and capital planning. So you'll note all the way to the far right, that comp plan goal is indicated, one, two, three, or four. Four alignment with the board goal area and the comprehensive plan review. So with that being said, we turn to 22-23 school board goals.
Excuse me, before we get underway, I'm sorry. Because this is a public meeting, we do have one public comment registering. So now would be the time before we dig into anything substantive.
Absolutely.
Just as a reminder, there is a three-minute time limitation on public comments. And as indicated, just one for tonight's work session, Judy Defonzo.
Hi, Judy Defonzo. I still live in East Ocean. I wanted to talk a little bit about fiscal responsibility, but I think this also overlaps a little bit with innovation. Because in addition to the old three Rs, there's three new Rs: reduce, reuse, and recycle. And I was looking at the Sierra Club website this morning as to who signed up for Ready for 100. And West Whiteland, West Ocean, West Town, Westchester Borough, East Bradford, and East Ocean have all signed up for this initiative. And that pretty much encompasses the whole Westchester area school district. And I'm just trying to figure out if we shouldn't kind of be looking to what the towns are doing with sustainability and things like that. I know Westchester University has a huge sustainability program that they're working on. Every building that they're building on campus, they heat with geothermal. They put the solar panels on it. They're encouraging students, faculty, and staff to use public transportation in order to get to the campus. They're really trying to reduce their carbon footprint. And I know that our district feeds a lot of students into Westchester and Penn State. Penn State has a similar initiative. And I'm thinking that we should be looking at, if it's fiscally responsible and feasible, to be looking at sustainability in our schools. I found one mention of Westchester on the internet for any kind of sustainability effort. And it was for Henderson High School. And it was their, the architect's website was mentioning that the cooling system is designed so that it can take advantage of peak electricity and still cool the buildings. So I mean, that's it for all the 19 buildings that we have. And I'm just thinking that, you know, especially now that, I forget if it's PTE or the state, has grants available to help fund sustainable building, that that should be kind of on the radar. Or at least to be looking at it from a, what if we went with something traditional versus what if we went with a more sustainable option in building improvements? I just think that it should be on our radar, being it's on the radar of all the towns in our district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll begin with 22-23 school board goals. And with that, we'll begin with student achievement. Any comments, questions, or suggestions for this goal area? Yes. So this is, I think this is a comment that I would like us to consider throughout all of the goals. And that is that I think that these goals can be better focused, not just on improving student achievement broadly, but also on decreasing gaps in achievement by, in terms of race and ethnicity, and also in terms of income. And so I'd like us to consider putting additional elements in these goals that consider those student groups. And I know we have a goal of equity as well. But as I recall, what we've really tried to do with equity is to infuse it throughout all of our goals. And I think that would be a really good place to start. Thank you for that. One of the things I just didn't know, I'm capturing notes as far as comments and points of edit in my documents. You won't see that projected here, but I'm capturing on my hard copy and also on my laptop. Thanks.
All right, thank you. I would like to see these goals more directed to SMART goals. Because I, in looking at the, in each of the goals, just to say the goal is that the board will monitor, then pretty much we've accomplished the goal. But what do we anticipate getting out of the monitoring? Like where are we headed? What is the monitoring providing? It should be directing us to an end state. And what would that end state be? So I think we should align it more with SMART goals so that we have an actual direction that we're supporting.
That's okay, I just want to define for anyone who's listening what SMART is. And it's specific, measurable, actionable, realistic, and timely. Totally concur with you, Joyce. I'd love to see a little bit more detail. One of my questions was, what is the timing around some of these assessments and measurements? How frequently are they done? When do we, when would we expect to check in on them? And I agree with Kate also in terms of expanding our scope of equity and to be also inclusive of socioeconomic factors. Because those can be an incredible predictor of educational outcomes.
Any other points of discussion for student achievement?
I'm not sure if the group can hear me.
We can hear you.
Just that when we reference the local effectiveness measures, they do reference a multitude of measurements that we are able to gather from, at the secondary level, from marking period to marking period. And at the elementary level, from trimester to trimester. And increasingly, I would say over the past four years, we have also disaggregated that data to look at it in terms of how different race, different ethnicity, some students are comparing to other students. We have also extended that to students who are identified with IEDs. And we even look at the course leveling data, not only in reference to race, but also gender. But I think what I'm hearing tonight would be that if we would disaggregate according to socioeconomic, and perhaps what we could look at there would be looking at three of reduced low students in comparison to other students.
And also to make that part of the goal statement, whatever we want to do with those specific words. Because that's not really spelled out in our goals. It's spelled out in progress. But if you're just, if the goal was just to monitor, then nothing really has to change. Because you're just listing what the progress was, and you're looking at it again.
But what does that progress mean, right, to that community?
Correct, correct.
Great.
So, so I hear you, I hear you all, the three of you anyway, saying, tell everybody to turn off their mic. Other people, not me.
I think what I hear the three of you saying is, we need more specificity in the goals and the assessment. How will we know? How will we know that we have achieved something? How often will we hear a report? Will we be hearing reports every month, every quarter? That's, none of that is clear in here. It's, it's a general nice statement, which we, okay, in previous years. But end of year, local effectiveness measures, that, and Bob just said, well, that's a lot of things. But it doesn't say what those things are in here. So if a person were just looking at this, they would say, well, what's that mean? And I think we probably need to be as clear as we can as to what we mean, and what we intend to do, and how we intend to be the board that assess, that monitors the improvement of the district, or the not improvement. Right? I mean, clear?
In terms of goals, can you just go over SMART again?
Would you slower, Stacy?
Sure. Specific?
Stop there.
Specific.
Specific. So, with these measures that are listed in progress, is this specifically what we were going after? I mean, it could, it could be that we met the goal, it could be that we didn't, we don't know, we're just monitoring it, and that's the goal.
Look, see the, see the progress here?
It's not progress. You're analyzing progress against an established goal. But if the goal was not clear, if the goal was not specific, how do you know you met the goal?
When, that's where I, I have some measure of confusion. When you're talking about students, and you say, we will improve 5%, 8%, 10%, something. And you're talking about students, it's different from improving production of a...
Soup.
Yes?
No, it's not different than anything.
Okay, just tell me.
You have to, for example, all I see, we are reducing the homelessness in Coatesville
Yes.
in five years by 10%.
Yes.
That is specific, it's time-bound, it's measurable. So when I go back and look in five years to say, whether the, look at the census and see, what are, what's the homelessness rate in Coatesville now? I know that what we were going, and whether we made it or not, we know, everybody knows what we're going on.
Okay.
Everybody knows what direction.
Okay.
So it's specific?
Because right now, it basically is...
Measurable?
Yeah, I mean, the way it is right now, it's, anything above what the prior year was, is an achievement. But that, what if we only exceeded 51%? Right? We haven't really said what the criteria is to claim victory on it, other than just exceeding what we did the year before.
Okay.
Do you want the rest of the letters?
Actionable.
Oh yeah, we...
Measurable, actionable, realistic, and timely.
So that gives us a true start from the, you know, we know, everybody's at the same gate. And we know where we're headed. That's the intention of the goal.
So I think what I'm hearing is that if we could, while we have a multitude of local effectiveness measures for the purposes of the board goals, that we would spell out what would be, and that, that might be quite a number. That certainly is something that's accomplishable.
Okay.
And Bob, I think this is important, not because having a goal makes it punitive in that we didn't achieve something. It's, okay, we didn't achieve it the why, right? It gives us something to prompt analysis and discussion to say, you know, we didn't get where we thought, but this is why. And this was still good. And these are the things that worked well. And so we should lean into that, or not further invest because what we tried didn't work well, right? But we don't have a way to really gauge the level of impact right now.
So, are we still just talking about number one? Are you talking about the whole page and a half there?
I think in general, like, the feedback that myself, Kate, and Joyce have given could be applied to any of these, right? Too all. Too all. And as we go through it, we should maybe give some examples where we think we could be more discreet in our assessments. As a example, illustrate an example that we will...
Do you have illustrative examples for assessment? Are we ready to give some examples? Tonight?
Like, on each one of these?
So I have a question. I just have a question about process, because I know we have a full-on school board meeting at seven o'clock.
We do.
So, are, it's my impression that we're not going to get through all of these this evening. And that we shouldn't try to get through all of these this evening.
I agree.
Okay, so if we know that, then we can just go through this list, and we'll get as far as we get. And then when would we revisit? Would it be in September at like the Ed Committee?
Yes.
Okay. So, because I think that's important, because if we're trying to get through all of it, it's not...
No, I think this is a good thing for us to do, to be on the same page and move forward with these carefully. And so if it takes two more sessions, that's better than hurrying through it and saying, okay, we're all done.
Okay.
Good for another year. So, shall we proceed then, carefully, through, you want to go through the goal? Or do you want to go through the assessment? Or marks of progress? What, how would you like to do this?
I know what I would do.
What would you do?
Well, I would go back through these and make, I would start with the goals. Because we don't really have anything to, and if you're asking what should be a part of the goals, I would just look at the progress column, and maybe that's the starting point. And then do some of the disaggregation of data that was mentioned, or that Kate mentioned. And say, just say specifically, this is our plan for percentage of students passing English for 23-24, or for 20, I'm sorry. For 22-23. This is our percent, this is our goal for students passing math for 22-23. This is, and so on and so forth. So I would, I would start reassessing these goals and repurposing them so that we have a place to start.
Because in the classroom, you want a teacher to be able to tell you, what is the goal for today or next week? And then, how will you know that they know it?
You corral everybody around the same clear, crystal clear goals.
Right. So, we're, I'm not looking at assessment as much as, what's the goal, and how will we know we achieved it?
The only thing, Sue, I kind of began on a different page. But to me, it's the assessments that we're really talking about time. The assessments are establishing a metrics, a measurement technique. Progress is just later on the status that we'll update periodically. Stacy's point, and we periodically validate how we're doing. But right now, to me, it's the assessments that we're building out tonight. That was my thoughts.
I would, I would agree with that. I think that we need to be very focused, very specific with the assessment. We have the goal, okay?
Wait, 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 make the assessment then part of the goal as we look forward?
You could, as a measurement?
As a, as a specific measurement.
Yes, specific measurement, yes. Because the goal, many times goals can be a little bit broader or specific. But you want to see, as everyone has said, the achievement. We want to see, are we making progress? And how much? When is it happening? Is it happening at the beginning of the year, the end of the, when is it happening?
Well, and I think, like, if you look at the first goal, and maybe this gets that part of what we're saying, maybe not. But the current goal is the board will monitor local effectiveness measures and assessments. Would it be better to say, the board will monitor the school district's progress against, you know, improvements on assessments as noted? Like, is our role just to monitor? Or is our role to assess the district's performance? That's like a really important difference.
And so what I'm saying is that you just need to know what success looks like.
Mm-hmm.
That is the goal. So it's, no, it's not just to monitor.
Right.
Because we can do that on September 15.
So how would you review it?
I would say the board will, I would include, whatever the assessment measures we determine show improvement in our district, I would make that part of the goal. I would give it, I would give a measurement to say, we wouldn't, we will increase, will improve reading, passing English by X percent. And I would give it a timeline.
Because there needs to be a real flow between the three, the goals, the assessment, and the progress. Here's the goal, here's what we want to do. The assessment, here's what we're going to do to get there. And then the progress is, here's what the results were of doing the things that we said we were going to do in assessment. So there's a real flow between the three.
And the assessment is really the bottom line, what we're after. We need to be able to see that clearly. We need to know, does third grade, are they progressing the way we think they should because of the goal?
Right. No, the assessment is not the goal.
No, because of the goal.
We stay at the goal.
We stay at the goal, okay. And then the assessment.
The assessment is not the goal, though, the goal.
Assessment, the assessment is a maybe measure.
Right.
The goal, okay.
So if I may, for the, for the first goal area, if we had the assessment portion, as it's listed now, brought in with the goal. And then how is framed for the local effectiveness measures? As the indicators that we're specifically looking for. Does that capture? Because that's, in that regard, then it is SMART, then it is specific when we're looking at this checkpoint. But I think it does get to the question, is, does that capture the original goal as it's listed? Because I think all of what you're saying is here. It's just where it's placed and organized.
I would agree. I accept that, the disaggregated data of designing.
Well, and also, you know, in terms of making the goal measurable, this first...
Well, and also, you know, in terms of making a goal measurable, this first goal, I think Stacy said this, all it says is that we need to show improvement, however minute. Is that good enough for us? Or are there some, do we wanna see 5% improvement, 10% improvement? And I know that's a difficult question, because we're not, we're not data folks here, like, we don't, like, I, I'm a researcher, and I can't tell you what size percentage improvement I think is appropriate for every one of these goals. Like, I actually don't know what's reasonable to, you know, what I think would be reasonable and yet ambitious. But if, if there's nothing concrete, we don't really have anything to measure, I guess. So I think it's really, it's a tough situation to be in. Because sometimes, you know, in the past, I remember, and there's some in here still, like, in other places, where, you know, we're looking for a 5% improvement, and I say, well, why 5%? Why not 3%? Why not 10%? How do we come up with 5%? And it's, that's not very, you know, it's not very clear. So I don't know if it's the right amount of improvement, or if we could be more ambitious. And that's true throughout here, that's a kind of a general comment, which I know is a Pandora's box, but if we're talking about measurable, what do we, you know, what is the goal? What is it that we're trying to, to get to? And sometimes we know it, sometimes we don't. Are those reasonable or not?
I think to the attainable part of the SMART goal portion, that's the anomaly, because typically, we look at trend data to say, what is attainable? If it should be 3, 5, or 10, what is the number, and where does that come from? But because we're in such a different place, as far as where our students, where our teachers have been, as a result of COVID, it's, what's the just right fit, as far as the rate and the pace for the expectation? So I think, in that regard, our trend might look at just the past year, or we may look at, as it's listed here, the pre-pandemic levels. But I do think that that's one of the practices that we've engaged in, is saying, what has been the trend, and what's the right expectation for the rate of change we should be anticipating?
So I think those environmental factors just have to be built in, because we, no matter what, we still need something to gauge us and to take us into the future. So, we're gonna have to take the best possible analysis and say, you know what? This is where we're headed, and this is why. If we determine at some point that those factors that we use to analyze, maybe they were faulty, then we can go back and change that, but at least everybody knows what we're working with. And that's what I think is important, because when you have things that are nebulous, and then you say, well, you know, if you have things that are nebulous as far as the goals, we've always achieved the goal. Because we just have, when you have something as broad as, we're just taking a look at this, and we're seeing where we are, well, if that's the goal, then of course we're gonna achieve that goal. Cause if we're just taking a look at it, we haven't done any analysis, we haven't, did it get better? Did, you know, was everybody working towards the same, in the same direction? That's what we, that's what I think is important to establish.
And I think it's good to just acknowledge that, like, we don't expect the targets to be perfect science, like, perfection is the enemy of progress, right? They're informed guesses, if you will, right? We look at trends, we capture our assumptions, and then when we assess the progress, right? We take that into account, right? And it's, again, it's not about it being punitive, but at least having set a trajectory, and then understanding our ability to either achieve it or not achieve it, and make adjustments that's necessary. It's just kind of what we do with our students, right? We set a trajectory and...
So, we're recording out here and saying, we have these amazing numbers, you just be quiet. We have these amazing numbers that say 98%, 97%, 98% pass science, pass math, pass English. What's passing? I mean, is that good? Is that great? Is that enough? That's what, that would be a question that I'm asking, looking at these percentage of passing grades in core academic subjects. Well, it looks great. It hasn't changed much in the last couple of years, but 98, you can't get any better than that, they're all passing. But what does that really mean?
And maybe we need further definition of what these numbers mean. Or, if we drill down further, are they passing, is C and above passing? If so, then we could bump it up to, you know, B and above, you know? Is the new definition of passing according to this?
It's a really good point, Derek, cause we could see a whole spectrum of achievement there, right? Like, are we seeing the majority of our students in A, B, C, and how is that trend changing over time? And I don't want us to get stuck on just, we're stuck on the first one. And we don't wanna get stuck. But I think this is a perfect example of why it's important to do it in this way, cause it creates a rich discussion, so.
So for the main points, as far as an edit, we're gonna look at decreasing the gaps in achievement with a focus on ethnicity and income, include the SMART framework with intended targets, expand the goal statement to be more expansive of progress, and look at specificity in identifying metrics, and the progress monitoring with a set criteria. So that's our work as far as going back and editing. I think now that we've captured that as a through line for all the other goal areas, we know that's understood. We'll look at those for the other components, and provide a draft if we can. Let us know if you wanna move forward with any additional feedback for student achievement, or if you're ready to move forward to equity.
I have one question, on goal seven. It says, we'll monitor social emotional learning plans for each building, and I was trying to reflect coming here and think about, like, are, have we seen anything that actually shows us those results at the building level? Like, are you actually able to measure at the building level?
Sorry, I'm gonna do different screen, too.
Okay, so if, if social emotional learning can be measured by showing increased suspensions, improved attendance, increased participation in extracurricular activities and so forth, then you wanna see the numbers for that?
Yeah, I, I feel like our readouts have been the aggregate, like, how is, how is it doing in the district? But I'd be curious, and, and maybe it's appropriate or not appropriate, or this would make it competitive between buildings to actually show the data. But I'd be curious to know if application, the same principles and techniques applied in different buildings, right? Which are inherently gonna have different environments, cause of this different staff. If we see more impact, if we see more adoption, we get more response from the students in one area of the district versus another, and try to understand how, and, and maybe that's not something we need to do at the board level, but I am curious if the administration is looking at it that way.
That's, that's critical, but definitely the district has to look at that. Then we need to know if that's happening, right? We don't do it, we don't organize it, we don't get involved at that level, but we can say, okay, and I don't think there's anything wrong with comparing by building, but we have to...
My point is, the board goal sets by building, but we as a board do not read out on it, or get a readout at the building level. So as a board, we're not gonna assess and monitor those at the building, though our goal should maybe not say at the building level.
So...
Or we have to change how we're reading out.
Right. So we say that based on improvements in these things, we, we are going to give SEL the credit for that? Right.
I think there's too many other things that go into all of those outcomes.
So, what about this goal?
Well, could this, could the goal simply be, like, robust implementation of social emotional learning plans, like?
That's a goal.
Yeah, like, it doesn't, I, I think it's too, I, I just don't think, in terms of measurement, you can attribute any of these things to just SEL. There's research that shows that SEL contributes to those things, but there's many other things that contribute too. So I, I don't think that there's a one-to-one correspondence, but I do think that, you know, based on the research that we have, it's pretty clear that SEL can improve climate, it can do things, so we have an interest in making sure SEL is implemented in a consistent and robust way. Maybe that's just what the goal is, and we walk away from sort of outcomes related to SEL, because it's too loose.
Implementation of SEL in robust and focused, yes.
With the assessments, are there any assessments, whatever would you say as far as causality? There could be some things that we're not looking at? So are there any metrics that you want to revise for the assessment component? Well, I wouldn't say so, except there, you know, I do think some of our, our annual survey data speaks to the degree to which students feel supported and connected, and all the things, you know, the proximal outcomes that you'd want from SEL. You know, students feeling a sense of belonging. We have some survey data that indicates those things. I personally would be more comfortable looking at those data than I would looking at hard outcomes. That's just me, but...
I agree with that. Anybody else?
The surveys are captured in there.
It's real hard to say, okay, we have fewer suspensions. I'd like to see fewer suspensions, I'd like to see fewer discipline issues, and it would be lovely to say that SEL is responsible for all that, but that's tough to tie in directly. So Kate, you're saying, parent, teacher, student survey data is one of your main ways of getting feedback on that? And also...
I would think it would be more credible to have an assessment on it.
How about knowing that there is a robust SEL plan in each building, that it, that is being carried out?
I mean, we'll be assessing those SEL plans?
No, I don't think so, right.
Goal is sort of disconnected from the level at which we're on, I mean. We don't wanna look at those.
So, this is not, and this is a goal you would like to, do you wanna leave it in there? We are giving time and money into social emotional learning. We say that's a very important component for our district, and the board should know that it's happening, but how do we do that?
I think the goal needs to remain the way it is, but we need to be softer with it, we need to not look at each school. I don't think we can compare them.
No, we're not gonna do that, we, we cross that off.
No, but I mean, we have to know what the schools are doing, the independent schools.
And how would we know what is happening? The administration reports to us.
That's correct.
So, what we need is administrators to say, perhaps, either have somebody from the building report, this is how, what social emotional learning looks like, cause it doesn't look the same in first grade as it does in high school. And so, what's it look like in a typical high school classroom, or a typical middle school classroom? Are there extensive lesson plans? Is there a whole period given to SEL? Is it something you do all day? Or is it embedded in everything else you do? So...
So, could we at least agree that the goal should be adjusted from, for each building, to something to address, like, at the elementary and secondary levels?
Yep.
Yes, yeah, we can do that.
Yep.
We change the dimension in which we're even looking at it.
Each level.
Cause I feel like we do do that, right? We are understanding the strategies and techniques being applied, we are getting a readout at the elementary level, and at the secondary, we're not doing it in the building.
So if we have something that reads, something like, the board will monitor the social emotional learning plans for robust implementation as evidenced by multiple measures in climate walks, increased participation in extracurricular activities, parent, teacher, student survey.
So, do we know the level, do we know the level of participation? Now, this goes back to SMART goals. If you know the level of participation now, then what would we'd like to see it be?
But see, it doesn't, the reason that doesn't work is because participation in extracurricular activities could have to do with a million other things. Maybe kids have jobs, maybe parents can't pick them up after school, maybe they don't have the money, there's so many different things. If you don't wanna hold SEL up as responsible for something that complex, I would, there's either the assessment is that we get presentations from the district about these SEL plans, and we're satisfied with them, that's the easiest way to assess this new goal, or if we also wanna look at student surveys and parent surveys, well, maybe just student surveys, or maybe student and teacher surveys. I mean, I would love to hear what the district would say about that. But just to see that, you know, we're getting some reports on survey data that, that, you know, people that are in those schools are feeling connected, supported, you know, that they're good environments. That would be going...
We're trying to apply hard data to something that is not a hard data kind of goal. Social emotional learning, feeling, feeling a part of your building, accepted, respected, not, not denigrated, not bullied, those are things that tell us that social emotional learning, in whatever form it is, is working.
So it'll play out as a factor, like attendance, and, and behavior and that kind of thing.
But don't, don't evaluate these things under social emotional learning. Okay? Yes?
May I add something? Yes?
We can hear you.
Go ahead, Laura.
Yeah, I would just like to add a little bit of what Sue said, and say, perhaps the district could do more to explain to us what best practices are, and how what we're doing in SEL compares with those best practices, since this isn't a quantifiable conflict.
Yes, absolutely.
So for the purpose of time, are we okay to look at closing out student achievement as far as that first goal, goal area?
Yes.
Apply the threads that we discussed to the other goal areas, and then come back with an updated draft? Thank you. So any additional feedback for goal number eight, or any other, the goal numbers as student achievement?
I don't have anything else for student achievement, but I say, let's start with goals, or equity on the next one. Next time we get together, which will probably be around the education slash social, social pupil services evening. Yes?
Yes. And one more thing to say, just about goal eight. And this is another thing for you guys to consider, so we say that at least 80% of the kindergartners will be reading Arab above grade level, I may. So what, my response to that is, why wouldn't our goal be 100%? And if it shouldn't be 100%, tell us why. So if you're setting 80% as the goal, just one sentence that says, you know, eight, I mean, 80%, you know, reading level among kindergartners is considered, you know, where you came up with that number? So that we know where you came up with that number. Because I would, I would want 100% of those kids reading at, at or above grade level. And if that's not possible, or if that's not reasonable, because of all the things that educational professionals know that I might not know, it would be good to know.
I think since there's so many other factors, like development issues, maturity issues, that 80% isn't, we're not shooting to hit 80%, we're always shooting to hit 100, but if we hit 80%, then we've reached the goal. Does that make sense?
Realistic.
Something that's realistic.
Realistic, right.
And it's not, it's probably not realistic that 100% are gonna be reading at grade level, because of things that are beyond our control.
I would just hear Kate, that was a pre-pandemic measurement, that we had 80% of more of our kindergartners reading at or above grade level. And we saw this year, Kate, too, while students made progress, there weren't, there wasn't as much progress for those students as we saw in other indicators for grades three through 12. So I think that's why we're still at that, at that 80% number, because that would represent sort of the historical highs pre-COVID.
Okay.
So, just one last, two other goals, actually, that I had a question on. Do you want us to just send those to you? Do you want us to ask them tonight?
I think for the purposes of time, that'd be good if we can send them.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll go through that.
That's fine. And two, just two out of the rest, so.
That'd be great.
I think that's an excellent idea, if you, rather than waiting until next month, if you look through these goals now with what we've said tonight in mind, and you have something to add or change, then send them to Kalia.
All right.
And we can then, by the time we start up again in September, we will have a clearer sense of where we're going, okay? It's good, this was good.
Excellent. Thank you. So we will convene that at September?
We will.